I call the February 25th, 2025, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda Item. Matters presented by the public that will be later in this meeting as Agenda Item Number 16 that we'll take up this evening. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first item of consideration on the agenda is the Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Items of Consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero. Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Six. We'll have a monthly report on the delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grandstaff. Scott, welcome.
Good afternoon. This is a report for the end of January, January 31st. Our personal property collection rate was 92.06. And this is the 23 personal property. As you know, the 24 wasn't due until February 5th. During the month, we collected $42,548 of 23 personal property. Real estate, as of January 31st, we collected 91.33% of the 24 real estate. Since January 1 of 2025, we collected $84,459 from tax. Our debt set off total for 2024 is $401,149. In the last two weeks, we sent out over 300 letters for new debt set off claims to coincide with people's tax returns. So far, in the month of February, we've had 23 DMV stops collected.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Grandstaff at this time? Thank you. Agenda Item Number Seven, we'll have an update from the Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation. We have with us Mark Heath. Mark, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of the board, I have an update for January, for January of this year. In our business development section and also our workforce area, our staff are building a new program, Young Professionals Group, trying to reach out to young professionals, moving in our community, get them oriented, keep them here. They're targeting folks from 25 to 40 years of age. They had their first meeting at Bruno Brewery downtown on January 29th. There were 30 people there, well attended. We had transplants from Texas, Florida, North Carolina, and New York among that group. So obviously, they're trying to help get them oriented in the community and make sure that they're well adjusted and will stay here. Their next meeting will be in late March, and we have high hopes this will be worthwhile, therefore, it's an effort for us. It's something the industry leaders have been asking for, to try to bring this group together and get them to make sure that they will stay here. You can see our attendance, Mountain Valley, Teal Jones, Press Glass are what the status of those are in Press Glass. Today is already over 400 employees. That's from their first, including the new expansion, they're really focused on that one. So their target for this expansion is 325. It will be added to the 200 that they had originally. So they're doing very well and very happy. There are seven inquiries at offices that our staff has had. You can see the folks that they're dealing with. Sugar Mama's opened up in Ridgeway. Saw some of these people there for the ribbon cutting. That was great to have, to see you helping to celebrate a new business. Shirley Dodson, the VDP was in, met with Marshall, connecting on, trying to get Marshall to enter into companies that are hiring employees to match up with those cutting jobs in our community. So folks that are being laid off, that are leaving and know what the new job opportunities are. You see that the unemployment rate for this month, we're back down to three, six. Since the year, we see a trend that we're too much where we work, just kind of act as soon as the season comes and goes. Seasonal hiring around Christmas and other holidays kind of keeps our labor force steady. We met, there's a new door for Southern Republican, Joe Thorpe. We had him down, and he met with the Chicago Cross, to make sure he knew what was going on as Lot Two, particularly with the, we met. The IDA Board was hosted. Mr. Wagner had been at C-CAD this past month. After me, we toured Crown Holdings, the C-Can plant, which was a great tour. They, I wish we had a tape that we're going to go back and say again, but they could not say enough good things about our labor force. Said it's as good a labor force as they have throughout the Crown system. They're very, very happy with the workforce that they're finding here. That's a good advertisement for us. The new, updated, yes, Martin's site is up and running. You see some additional buildings, Rich Acres and Fifth Drive have been added. And we did launch the website in the last month. And also, of course, people involved in the, in the professional field. So that's collaboration, not only through tourism, our small business business. Tourism, there are 65 site visits. You can see the active requests came from a lot of places this month. It's kind of unusual to have that many from that wide, big, rough area. Ball distribution went to 115. Guy went to five businesses. We listed there, our staff attended the Caesar's grand opening, not to participate, but just to see what was going on and know how we might, we might take advantage of all the things that were going on, getting that building down. The trail campaign needs to continue and working with Captain Vanoy, getting some more grant money for that. We've had our bi-weekly glass and going with this way to go now. The new effort that our staff has put together, it's going to be a tourism resource collaborative meeting here. It was going to be on February the 20th. That was a snow event, so it's been rescheduled from March the 20th. But there are 35 regional folks in tourism that are signed up for that now. We'll have partners from the Virginia Tourism Corporation staff, Clay Campbell, Josh Flinkus on the Crown floor, Johnny Buck will all be there, talking about our tourism assets on a regional basis. We're excited about that to advance, folks from larger regions there. And you can see the other regional agencies, the Changeroom channel, all of them are all participating in that. But take just a second, we'll give you an update. These photos, who we're going to look at, I think you can see them on your screen. We're taking common crossing just a couple of weeks ago in between the snow vents. We're currently, we've done a little more than one and a half million cubic yards moved on the site. There's a 3 million cubic yard project. You can, that's a pretty good area. It shows you what's going on. The green on my left, that is that grade. That's what the final grade will be. And we're continuing to go to the northwest where the site's built out. Gives you another view. You can begin to see some of the slopes. There have been areas that were 65 to 80 feet that we had to take down or fill in. It's been a lot of, lot of grading. Obviously, at the bottom, the tree area is a good view of Lot Three. That will be, will be the next lot that we attempt to be graded. We're not going to attempt it, but we're going to do it at some point. But that will yield another pad of nearly 100 acres. And that will be graded also. This view gives you a good idea of just some of those slopes that are having to be taken down or built up. So you basically cut off the hot spots and you fill up the low spots. You can see there's a couple, couple layers of rock out of the 3 million cubic yards that we're excavating. One million is rock, which is, is Henry County. We see that a lot. Here's a good view that shows you Crown and Press Glass. And you can see the, to the left, you can see the line on the building for Press Glass. Their expansion is underway. It's now completely closed in under roof. Another good, good view, just almost all tract two has been cleared on the left-hand side. My left-hand side, you see a little bit of tree. Can't be, that's the last area to be, to be cleared. So you're looking straight down the site, site from the north, basically to the south in this direction. Gives you another good perspective, looking across from Crown and Press Glass on the right to the site. And so everybody, we've shown this to, or have sent links to the county's folks. Tim Pace's guys fly drones once a month or so. We send those links to prospects. It is one of those beautiful sites. When you look to the west, obviously, you see the mountains. This gives you a good view of Press Glass, the site at the bottom. Part of the building on the bottom is the, is the expansion. You can see the grading around it, become parking and eventually on the left-hand side of the new office building. This is a view of part of the park, or part of Lot Two rather than that is that grade now. And they're seeding. Hanger's doing a great job. They're strumming and seeding as fast as they can to try to keep erosion down. This gives you a good view of just how much rock, we're stockpiling the rock, and then that's being mixed in with the other dirt that's being moved as we build back up. It's really, it's expensive. It costs more money to do it, but it actually gives you a much better foundation at the end of the day to use all that on-site. And it helps us to not, it's a bound site. We don't have to bring any material or take anything out. On the right-hand side, you can kind of see a good example of the slope. That right in the middle with that long area with the rock pile, that's, that was the highest area that we're going down. Actually, three layers of stone in that. It wasn't solid all the way through. You have stone, then you have clay material, then you have stone under it, just a little bit of you. This is the north side. The power line is really the boundary on the northwest side of the site. So you can see just the top, it's currently a little bit of the pines left to take out. So I thought we'd give you that update. Site, site work's going very well. Hanger's done a great job. Tim Pace and his staff are doing an excellent job. We're projecting about this time, maybe March of next year, it will be complete. So thank you all very much.
All right.
Glad to answer your question.
Does anyone have any questions, Mark, at this time? Thank you, Mark. That takes us to Agenda Item Number Eight, A Consideration of Adjusting the Personal Property and Real Estate Tax Due Dates and Delinquent Dates. We have with us our County Treasurer and Commissioner of Revenue make participation in this as well.
She was hanging back.
Well, she was hanging back, so you were standing alone for a moment there.
We mentioned, we spoke about this at the planning session last week or so, that I'd like to see the due dates. I'm guessing the due dates and the late dates changed. And the reason I want to see it done is, 25 years I've been here, we've had two due dates on the same date for the two taxes, Henry County, Kansas City, and Platte. Which, real estate's always been due October 1st, with the late date is December 5th. Personal property is due December 5th. So taxpayers have two bills, the only two tax bills that they pay the county, due on the same day. The last four years, due to complications in the commissioner's office, you know, we've had to extend it to February 5th. And that's later than we wanted, but we've had good response because taxpayers thought it was easier for them to have two tax due dates. So I've been thinking of this for several years. So we came up with, our proposal is to keep real estate due dates, October 1 each year, and have it be delinquent after October 31st. So November 1, it'll be delinquent. And that gives taxpayers a 30-day grace period, where now they have a 65-day grace period. Tough thing, it's extremely too long. We normally mail real estate bills out around Labor Day, so that gives them 30 days before the actual due date, and on the 60-day before the delinquent date. So we feel like that's ample now. Personal property, what we're suggesting, where it was due December 5th with no grace period, so if you came in one day late, you had the 10% penalty. No grace period, we never had the ability to give the grace. So we want, hopefully, move that to December 1, which will be a month after, basically two months after real estate's due, but one month after the real estate delinquent date. Plus, it'll be a grace period of 15 days, so they have to December 15th to make a normal payment. And on December 16th, they'll be charged the delinquent penalty, which is 10%. And we plan on our those bills mailed out by mid-October of each year. So that's what we would like to do. I know y'all have to do the public hearing stuff, but if you have any more feedback since our last meeting, I'm glad to listen to it. The decisions really have to do with the public hearing, but I would like to say that if y'all want to do this, that we feel confident we can implement it by this fall.
Okay, and then along with the public hearing being advertised, should we go forward with the motion? This will be explained in the advertisement?
Yes. We'll do all the advertising, you know, we'll blitz it, get it out there. And real estate, you know, we'll notify all mortgage companies. That's the only one I kind of worry about, but we'll do as much advertising, website on the bills, we'll send the flyers included in the bills, hopefully get it out on our website, spread the word, hopefully y'all spread the word. We have district meetings or community meetings, y'all be glad to come and talk to them about it. But, you know, a change you have to let people know. Also, if you notice, the last few years, I put a due date or a penalty date on these envelopes, on the outside of the envelope that are received, the same, just due February 5th. So we'll make sure that, no comment, best we can, as much as we can.
Mr. Lyle?
Yes, sir.
If we have a public hearing with these advertised dates, and again, public hearing is to take input, should we, at that time, decide to tweak it in any formal fashion? Do you have to go back with another public hearing?
No.
Okay.
You do not. You can, any reasonable period after that, you could adopt it. Immediately after the public hearing, you could change it. You could adopt it months later. I mean, it's, it's, there's really no expiration date on a public hearing.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? I think this was explained during our planning session. Thank you all for coming today. Any questions of Mr. Grandstaff or Ms. Harrison at this time?
And my question is related to this, but, you know, there's a 2.95% charge when you use your credit card, debit card. And I've talked to both of you, and I don't know if there's a way to, you know, whether we can purchase our own system or do something, but I've had a lot of folk who, you know, have had concerns about that because people do like the convenience of paying online, but then you get hit with that three, basically 3%. Sometimes it's only 17, 18, 19 dollars, but, you know, it's still offensive. So if that's something you could look into and see if there are any options, you know, we would appreciate that.
Ever since I've been on credit card systems, that's the way it is. The code in Virginia says that we have to collect 100% of the tax. This is, I want to illustrate to you, if you walk in and pay me $100 cash, he pays my credit card, and if we absorb the fee, I want to go get $97 from him. How's that fair to him or the county? We're losing money. If you want to lose money, we can look into it, but by state code, I've got to collect 100% of the tax. I've got to get $100. Credit card companies have to get their cut. But the public doesn't realize, whenever you use your credit card, the merchant's paying that. If you go to check the pigs right now, they have a cash and a credit option on their bills. But that's the way it's always been, just the public was not aware. Whenever you use your credit card, somebody's paying that 3% fee. Merchants, they absorb it. Government, we can't absorb it. There's no way around it. But that is called a convenience fee. So it's convenient for you to use your credit card, not drive in or mail a check or one other way, but that's no way around it. And I've looked at it for 20-some years.
Okay.
Can I make a comment on that? You know, as, as a businessman, you know, it's expensive to run credit cards. It's about 3% on every charge that I run, period, your credit card. And at the end of the month, that's a lot of money when you run a lot of credit cards. Yeah, you can see, 3% is not a lot, but when you add it up, 3% is a lot. It's a lot, lot. So we have had to tack on that 3%, you know, to some of the, you know, ones that we do in order to not lose 3% because you work in, in retail business, you work on a small margin anyway. To take 3% of that out of market, it hurts. It does, so.
Imagine if we take in $100,000 with tax 3%. That's $3,000.
Yeah, and I was just trying to see if there were any options for our citizens because, you know, some folk, that 3% becomes a pretty good amount of money.
But it's, I said, it's credit cards. Henry County's not getting that 3%.
Correct, correct.
We're not getting it.
Correct.
The credit card companies are getting it.
And that's what I'm trying to see, because some credit card companies, I don't know how much we collect through credit cards and debit cards, but, you know, for every million dollars, I guess we take in that way. Somebody's getting $30,000 just to give us a box or place online to put in your credit card, and that's, you know, pretty good money that somebody's making off of convenience.
Right, but that's what they did.
Yeah, for every million dollars that we take in that way, so. And just wondering if there's any options, anything that we could look at, we could do.
For 20-some years, there's no way around it.
And what you see now, 2.9 and 3% is pretty much an average, because a lot of merchants are charging 4%.
Correct.
You know, through the credit card companies charging it. So even if we were to absorb it, we would have to pass it along to the taxpayer in a different way. Yeah.
Like I said, you know, do you want to collect full tax or do you want to not collect full tax?
Yeah, and I get, you know, everything everybody's saying. I'm just saying that there are other options out there. I don't know if other folk, other cities, counties have other options.
Two other options, cash or check.
Okay.
I have a, just a comment. I know, Mr. Adams, we were talking about to, to schedule a public hearing where all of this also will be discussed. I do have, I know we've had a lot of lengthy discussions about this in at the last meeting, but just to reiterate some things also that we've already said, is that people can come in and pay early if they want to look at their tax bill, have some idea, break it into 12 months and bring, pay that to you as well, come into your office or drop it in the box. They can determine that themselves, but that's not something you're going to set up for people, but they can come in and do that.
Our real estate, we'll always take a prepayment, because, you know, real estate doesn't change much year to year, you know, with, as far as values, the reassessing of things. That doesn't change year. Personal property, we really don't like taking prepayments, because, one, you may not own a car from year to year. And, you know, that, that does fluctuate a great deal. So real estate, we take prepayments year-round. That's no problem. If you want to pay it monthly or quarterly, whatever, you know, basing it off what you paid in the previous year is a good way to go. But personal property, you know, that causes me headaches, because if you paid 500 this year, and you're expected to pay 500, you pay me 500, then you find out you got rid of two cars, and I got to around refund you money.
Just thinking it would help people budget, at least for the real estate, just, just kind of look at their, you know, their annual budget and break it into 12.
Yeah, it, it would help, but, you know, the calls you get on the credit card, we get, we get them all the same. We get people, I get a lot of asking why we don't take point-of-sale credit cards. And that's one of the reasons, because I would start a transaction with somebody and get to the end of it and say, well, I got to charge you this 3%. They're like, well, I'm not going to pay it. And I've got to back out of the transaction, start over, keep people waiting. And that's the main reason I don't do it point-of-sale in the office. I get that asked a lot. But if you were in my office, January 31st was a Friday for the due date, next two days, we had a steady line, probably 25, 30 people in line all day out the door, at Jim's, I saw. I'll tell you right now, 90% of those people paid cash. Cash. That's what happens in Henry County, we still have a lot of cash payers.
They don't want to pay that 3%. And until your point about the real estate, personal property, and paying some upfront, you know, most folk probably with real estate, their mortgage company's going to take care of that, so they're probably not even worried about that. Most people would benefit if they could pay the personal property, because that's the one that's going to come out of your pocket and, like I say, most people, you know, still have some type of mortgage. Mortgage company takes care of that. Many people, I shouldn't say most.
Well, we handle the 35,000 real estate bills we sent out, probably 7,000, 8,000 on escrow, have mortgages. Look, the rest of them don't. So we do have our mortgage. And that's, if we change the dates, that's, you know, my biggest contacts would be to let them know that they can't wait until December 5th, because they waited until December 5th, the week before, to get the real estate tax. So I'll hit them fast, hard, heavy, to let them know that the new late date is in October. But what calls you get on credit cards, I said, what you get, I get five times more. I hate to tell them that, but, you know, once they see it and get educated on how credit cards work, they're usually okay with it. Now, bigger complaints I get is that in the ELP, because they don't understand why we're paying two taxes on one car. And, you know, that's a whole other story for another day, but that's what I, like we all take up arms on.
And just to give Ms. Harrison opportunity, I don't know if there's anything that was left out that you want to add or?
He did a great job.
Okay.
All right, to take up the Agenda Item issue at hand, what is the board's desire as far as setting a public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to schedule a public hearing from March the 25th of 2025, to receive a public comment on the proposed changes to the personal property and real estate taxes, due dates, and delinquent dates, and also that the county will advertise the due date and the penalty due dates.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero. Jennifer, I thank you both for being here. Agenda Item Number Nine, we'll take up financial matters, beginning with 9A, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Fire Programs Aid to Localities Funds for Public Safety. Mr. Wagner?
Good afternoon. Public Safety Director Matt Tatum is asking the board to appropriate $257,251 received from the fiscal year 2025 Virginia Fire Program's Aid to Locality Fund. The funds will go toward the future purchase of a fire truck for the Collinsville Volunteer Fire Department. And the Emergency Services Advisory Council concurs with using this fiscal year 2025 for locality funds.
Mr. Bryant, I believe that's, Fire Department's located in your district. What is your action that you'd like to take?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm making a motion to approve the additional appropriations of $257,251 received from the Virginia Fire Program Aid to Locality Funds.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero. Jennifer. 9B, An Additional Appropriation and Award of Contract Referencing Rescue Squad Assistance Fund Grant for Public Safety. Mr. Wagner?
Public Safety Director Matt Tatum is asking the board to appropriate $177,876 received from a Competitive Rescue Squad Assistance Fund Grant. The funds will go toward the purchase of six 12-lead heart monitors slash defibrillators to be used by the Public Safety Operations Division. The grant does require a 50% local management. Its staff is asking the board to appropriate $177,876 from the general fund to meet the match requirement. If both appropriations are approved, Mr. Tatum is also requesting the board to award a contract to the Stryker Corporation for $355,752 for the purchase of those monitored defibrillators. The purchasing department has authorized Stryker as its sole source provider for this purchase. And I will point out, this is one reason staff emphasizes the importance of having a strong fund balance, so when we have an opportunity to capitalize on $177,000, we can recommend you take that for savings. Mr. Tatum is here, should you have any questions?
Okay, thank you for that background material, as well as the other background material that the board has received as part of its board packet. What action that the board might take in regard to this?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the appropriation of $177,876 from a Rescue Squad Assistance Fund Grant, appropriating $177,876 from the general fund for the grant match, and awarding a contract of $355,752 to Stryker Corporation for the purchase of six 12-lead heart monitors, defibrillators.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero. It's six zero. Jennifer, nine C, additional appropriation referencing a clerical position for the clerk of court. Mr. Wagner.
During the regular course of work in the Circuit Court Clerk's Office, Clerk Jennifer Ashworth has accumulated various refunds and revenues that have not been accounted for in the current budget. Mrs. Ashworth is requesting that the board appropriate twenty thousand dollars of the fund to allow for the continuance of a part-time clerical position in her office.
In regard to, uh, the additional appropriation of twenty thousand dollars for the Circuit Court clerical position, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of twenty thousand dollars for the clerk's, uh, clerical position.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero. Jennifer, nine D, an additional appropriation referencing additional state funds for school board. Mr. Wagner.
School Board is asking the board to buy yours to approve an additional appropriation of five hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars received from the Virginia Department of Education. The additional revenue is a result of recalculations performed by the Virginia Department of Education using the actual average daily membership or the number of students, totals for all school divisions, and an increase in funding for the Virginia Preschool Initiative, with the additional state funds the counties require to provide an additional local match of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and four dollars. Staff recommends the board approve the additional appropriation totaling five hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars with the additional match coming from the county's general fund.
Okay, thank you for that and the background material that's attached as part of your board, uh, working papers. What is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of five hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars received from the Virginia Department of Education and an additional appropriation of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and four dollars from the general fund for the required match.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's, uh, six zero. Jennifer, that takes us to agenda item number ten, um, with taking comments from the board, starting with Dr. Cobbler.
No, nothing today.
Mr. Pruitt.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Dillard.
Yeah, just would like to invite everybody to Bassett High School Thursday night for the, uh, Mr. Hilton, who's the choir director or teacher at Bassett. He's having a Hear My Prayer program celebrating Black History Month, and, you know, he would ask me to be a guest speaker, so looking forward to that, but would love to invite everybody to come out and take part in that Thursday night, uh, two twenty-seven at seven P. M.
Seven P. M.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Buchanan.
No, sir.
Mr. Bryant.
No, sir.
And I don't have anything. Mr. Wagner.
Just a little bit of update on the General Assembly. As you know, both the House and Senate has, uh, ended this session, all the bill, two hundred and eighty-five bills have been sent to the governor for his review. Of course, as you know, the governor can sign it, amend it, send it back, reject it, or the government essentially reject it. Some of the bills that we had interest in, uh, one particularly was the citing of Orangeville Solar Farms. Uh, I think it was our position, our, in our agenda packet, that we did not, uh, want to lose local, uh, say in how solar farms are cited, and there was numerous bills in the General Assembly that attempted to take away the right of you all to say, well, solar farms could go in your community, but fortunately, none of those bills made it through. Some was, uh, laid on the table, some was left in committee, so it is, I suspect it will come up again next year under the same topic. Uh, you may recall, we spent quite a bit of effort getting funding for, uh, Mayor River State Park so we can get that park off the ground, and a horse pasture district. Uh, in the final General Assembly budget, uh, there was no funds included for that park. Not likely that the governor will put it back when it gets to his desk, so we're already starting efforts to figure out a better strategy going forward for next year. Uh, we have the Director of Department of Conservation and Recreation is going to be here next week, sit down with us to, uh, develop, you know, a strategy and see how we need to go forward to get that park built in our community. Some of the big items in the budget, uh, three percent cost of living increases included for teachers and constitutional officers. There's some, uh, bonuses for teachers and constitutional officers. And one, one bill of interest that we track, uh, throughout the session that, uh, I was surprised that, that passed actually, and I suspect the governor plans to sign it, but as you know, we generate a little bit of tax revenue off of the off-track betting parlor in Collinsville, uh, Rosers. And it's only a small part, but, uh, most people do not know, the original when that was created, it said half of that local revenue had to go to New Kent County, where the horse track is actually located in Virginia. So for many years, all the other localities that have off-track betting parlor, such as Shender County, Town of Benton, uh, City Emporia, half of their revenue went to New Kent County. So the legislation was changed where now we get to keep one hundred percent of our local share starting July first, twenty twenty-six. So I say all that, it, it doesn't get changed or amended, I add about a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of new revenue in July first, twenty twenty-six. So I'll add.
Right. That takes us to agenda item number eleven. If someone will, uh, make a motion and cite, uh, the reasons for going into closed meeting as allowed by the Code of Virginia.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board convenes in a closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, two point two thirty-seven eleven A one, for discussion of appointees to the Public Service Authority, Industrial Development Authority, Planning Commission, Dan River Alcohol Safety Action Program Board, and the West Piedmont Planning District Commission. Two point two thirty-seven eleven A seven for discussion of pending legal matters. Two point two thirty-seven eleven A three for discussion of the acquisition disposal of real estate, and two point two thirty-seven eleven A five for discussion of as yet unannounced industries.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor? It's six zero. Jennifer, I'll see you all upstairs in five minutes. A closed meeting on a motion by Ms. Buchanan, a second by Mr. Pruitt. Uh, Ms. Powell, will you poll the board, please?
For members, the best of your knowledge on the public business matters, all the exempted from open meeting requirements referred to due to section two thousand three hundred thirty-seven eleven, what heard, discovered, considered in closed meeting? How do you vote? Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan, I believe that, uh, you have an appointment, uh, for the board's consideration for the, uh, I D. A.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board reappoint Barry Nelson to the, uh, Industrial Development Authority for a four-year term expiring March thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero. Jennifer. Uh, Mr. Bryant, I believe for the Planning Commission, you have, uh, three, three names for appointment?
Yes, sir, I do, Mr. Chairman. I'm making a motion that we, uh, reappoint Stuart Bowman of Collinsville District, Lynnwood Q. Vaughn of the Irishburg District, and Hail D. West of the Blackberry District to the Planning Commission for a period of four years, expiration date is March thirty-first of twenty twenty-nine.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is, uh, six zero. Jennifer, uh, Ms. Buchanan, for the Public Service Authority, I believe that you have a appointment for the board's consideration?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board appoint Joseph Pig to an unexpired term expiring January the fifth, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero. Jennifer, and Mr. Pruitt, I believe, uh, for the Dan River Alcohol Safety Action Program Board, you have an appointment for our consideration?
Yes, I make a motion to reappoint, uh, Tiara Dillard for a term of three years, which will expire March thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero. Jennifer, uh, Mr. Wagner, do you have any, uh, items for the board prior to us taking a recess?
Just a reminder, we'll meet back at five o'clock on the third floor, maybe join in with the school.
Board members, do you have anything before we recess? Okay, we will declare a recess and, as Mr. Wagner said, meet on the third floor, uh, school board, um, board room. I call the six P. M. session of the, uh, February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Henry County Board Supervisors back to order from a brief recess that we had from earlier this afternoon. Uh, like a welcome all of our visitors, remind you, uh, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public, that will take up later in tonight's meeting as agenda item number sixteen. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first item of consideration is agenda item thirteen. Uh, Mr. Pruitt, I think that, uh, you have a presentation, uh, to make and some background on that.
Yes, um, good evening, everyone. Um, it's an honor and a privilege to recognize, um, an extraordinary individual, um, whose dedication and service have greatly impacted the town of Ridgeway, the Ridgeway District, um, and Henry County in a whole. Tonight, I want to present Mr. C. D. Prilman, uh, with the Henry County Community Connected Citizen Award, also known as the Triple C. Award, for truly embodying the spirit of community service and commitment. Um, I don't think C. D.'s a stranger to, to most in this room, um, but his tireless efforts and selfless contributions are no secret. He's the driving force behind many of the events, initiatives, uh, that take place in Ridgeway, uh, the Christmas tree lighting, the parade, um, C. D.'s hard work, um, and the town's hard work on that, uh, makes it, um, a successful event every year. So, uh, C. D. also is very passionate, um, about our environment, um, and through his leadership, Ridgeway has embraced the importance of preserving the natural resources and achieved the distinguished title of the City USA. Um, that recognition would not have been possible without C. D.'s vision and commitment. Um, in addition to his work with community events, environmental initiatives, uh, C. D. is a dedicated board member of the Ridgeway Rescue Squad, um, and plays an important role there, and it goes beyond the projects that he, um, leads. He's fostered collaboration and civic pride among those who work alongside him. His willingness to give time, energy, and heart to his community inspires us all. Uh, so tonight, on behalf of Henry County, it's my great honor to present the Henry County Community Connected Citizen Award to Mr. C. D. Prilman. Uh, this award is a token of our deepest appreciation for all that he has done and
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt, and thank you, Mr. Prilman, for all that you do. It, uh, your work around town and the efforts do not go unnoticed, and, uh, thank you so much. You're setting an example for many, many people, uh, to live up to that standard, and we thank you. Agenda item fourteen will take up general highway matters. We have Lisa Hughes, David Kaiser from, uh, V. Dot. Lisa.
Thank you. Uh, just wanted to remind you all that our secondary six-year plan public hearing will be next month, March twenty-fifth, six o'clock. Um, we'll have the draft planned to, to put on next month's agenda, but nothing much has changed from around a hundred thousand a year that, that we get. We do have two projects that are fully funded, and that's Yates Road and, uh, a little pedestrian accommodation along Joseph Martin Highway for the people that walk up and down that road. So it, hopefully, we'll make some progress on that this year now that it's fully funded, those two projects.
Lisa, how far will that extend on Joseph Martin? Is it from the apartments back to two twenty or?
Three tenths of a mile. Uh-huh. Gets, gets in that vicinity. Doesn't go all the way to the S. P. C. A. Or doesn't go all the way to the S. P. C. A., but it goes.
Uh, it goes past the S. P. C. A.
Okay.
Down to the, um, gas station area up to the road that the office is.
Okay, perfect.
Very good. And, uh, you know, the last few months or so, I've been talking to you about a operational project we have planned there at Dire Street and, uh, Virginia Avenue, right at our office and Speedway, and that's going to start, uh, the first week of March. And what it is, it's, uh, again, just, just operational improvements to make that intersection function better. Uh, the best way I'd describe it, if you're coming out of Dire Street from the V. Dot office, you have to turn left or right. You can't go straight through to the Speedway. You'd have to turn left and go into that second Speedway entrance. So all really, the movements are going to be accommodated, just not the straight throughs. And the, the opposing movement out of the Speedway should be the same way. You can take a right, you can take a left, but you can't come straight back through to Dire Street. And the purpose of that is, you know, we've got a, uh, a signal phase that specifically, uh, monitors that right straight-through movement, and it doesn't get a lot of traffic, but it does take time off of that intersection. So the purpose is to get this intersection to function better, less, lot less delay.
And a question with that, you said Speedway area, and you said March?
Uh, the next, actually, the first week of March.
And how long will that project? Because, you know, the race will be coming up at the end of March.
And, and we have accommodations in all our contracts for race, work during race.
So this won't affect that race traffic?
No.
Okay.
She's talking about the Speedway convenience store.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, I think you missed her.
Got you.
Bojangles.
Well, you said Speedway.
I did, I sure did.
Okay, got you.
Names of people understand, but I guess that was wrong.
Yes, ma'am.
But any work on two twenty, we do limit.
Got you, got you. Just making sure.
During race time.
Yes, ma'am.
Exactly right. Thank you, sorry about that confusion. And, uh, the last thing I have is, uh, our neighbors to the west, several that you've seen it, but, uh, the Commonwealth Transportation Ward, uh, Transportation Board awarded a design bill contract for a hundred sixty-five million, and this is for the next section of fifty-eight through Vestas. It's below four miles. So that project will be getting underway. Now, it's a design bill, so it, it's similar to Lover's Leap. Uh, the Triton Construction, who's a low bidder, a successful low bidder, they're a company out of Virginia, they have to finish the design that we started. So there'll be a, probably a period of a year where they're doing that, and we're looking for actual construction to start in twenty twenty-six, just as soon as Lover's Leap finishes up. We'll be moving up those four miles to Vestas.
How, how are they coming on Lover's Leap?
Very good.
Yeah.
And, uh, again, we've got another year, they're on schedule, but, uh, it's an awesome project if you've not been through there.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
One section after these two are finished, does it not fall?
Crooked, Crooked Creek, and that's in Carroll County.
But Lisa, uh, a representative from Antioch Church wanted me to express their gratitude for V. Dot promptly dealing with their problem. They wanted me to tell you thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Hughes, I've got another, I meant to ask you when I was over to talk a while ago, the, uh, pedestrian light systems in Collinsville, did they, are they working this week?
They are working this week.
Okay.
We'll probably be on that side possibly through March.
Okay.
And then we'll move to the, to the other side.
Okay.
Yeah, we're working on foundations now, pouring concrete, but yes, they're.
I'm just, you know, and, and of course, people are impatient, you know that, but I've just had a lot of people come in and ask, when are you going to get finished? When are you going to get finished? You know, it, it is congested.
It does.
Really, when it, when it's busy there, it, I'm surprised that there's, there's not been accidents, you know?
Yeah, especially at this time of day, we were just talking about it.
It's, it's, it's tough.
Yeah, but we're going to get further, so just.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Lisa, if you would, take a look at, um, Spencer Penn Road and the surface there. Uh, there's some potholes.
And I'll just chime in a minute. I know we had a little bit of a conversation last board meeting where the constituents have asked for painting lines, and I think, Mr. Wagner, I think you sent me an email and said that that's going to happen, I don't remember exactly when, and then the speed limit on Reed Creek and, I said oak level, but it's the oak level and Reed Creek Drive, those two, is that something that I talked to you about or just mentioned to you in terms of the speed limit?
They'd be fine, if you want us to look at the speed limit of Reed Creek Drive, we can do that.
And, yeah, and just to follow up, because when constituents call me or ask me, I always, I try to communicate that, but also I ask them to call your office.
That's right.
And I was just wondering if, for specifically to Reed Creek, do you, this might be a tough question, but are people calling you about some road issues or intersection issues from Reed Creek that you can think of? I would say since the last board meeting.
I have, with the citizen there in the intersection, and, you know, we did get a lot of concerns about the lines on Reed Creek, which we're resolving as soon as the weather breaks, but I have not had any discussions on the speed limit.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other items?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 15 will have a public hearing referencing the rezoning application, R-25-02, Peggy K. Gore. We have with us to give us background material, our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Lee Clark.
Sure. This property is located in 340 Primrose Drive in the Blackberry District. The property is shown on tax map 1390167A. The applicant requests the rezoning of just over a half acre from suburban residential district to rural residential district. The original house was destroyed by fire, and the applicant wishes to have the option to place any type of single-family dwelling on the property, either a single-wide, double-wide, or possibly a site-built home. Following the public hearing, both the Planning Commission and staff recommended approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take any input on this at 6:12 P.M. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on this public hearing, on this rezoning application?
Well, I'm standing here for my mother.
Yes, sir, if you will, I'm going to read a brief statement. It's time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. Come to the podium and state your name, and please try to keep your presentation to no more than three minutes.
Yes, we just wanted to get a change from suburban to rural, and that's pretty much it.
Okay.
I apologize for my parents, I was just getting off work.
All right, would you state your name for the record?
Richard Kendrick. Richard Kendrick.
Richard Kendrick, okay, thank you, Mr. Kendrick.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the board during this public hearing on this rezoning case? Seeing no indication as such, we'll close the public hearing at 6:13. This is in my district, I've been by to see the property. It's very clean after having lost a house to fire. I mean, the lot itself is immaculate, and again, I understand what they're trying to do is having the option of going a number of different routes to put something back on that property. I'm fine with this rezoning application, agreeing with the Planning Commission. If someone will make the motion on my behalf.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the rezoning requests.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number 16, matters presented by the public. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board on the matters presented by the public? Yes, sir, please come to the podium. Same rules apply, state your name, and keep your presentation to about three minutes or less.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Craig Woodair, Mayor of Town of Ridgeway, 225 Carriage Court, Ridgeway, lovely town of Ridgeway, Virginia. I just wanted to come up and say thank you so much for recognizing Mr. Prilman. He has done a fantastic job, a very valuable member of our community, and we're so glad that he lives in Ridgeway. And I would also like to thank the board and Mr. Wagner and his team, for the great communication that we have with the Board Supervisors. Thank you for coming down to our opening of our new business, Sugar Bombas. We really appreciate your support and the support over the years that you guys have given the town, and the support that I get from Mr. Wagner, I always receive, he always takes my phone calls, and here recently, the support we've gotten from Mr. Clark and your support in removing some of those derelict buildings and residences in our homes. And so that's helped our initiative to clean up Ridgeway and make it a great place to live. But I just want to thank you all for the great communication that we have, the relationship that we have with the county, and we're so thankful for that, that's all I have to say. I did want to thank Ms. Hughes before she left, that she's done a great job on the removal of the snow this year, and with the planning and the execution of the removal of the snow. It's been, you know, we've had a turbulent year with the snow this year, so unfortunately, she's back here to receive those praise. Thank you again.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board on the matters presented by the public? Seeing and hearing no indication, if the board so desires, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in second, all in favor, six zero, Jennifer. Everyone, have a good evening.